Well, good afternoon, council fellow councillors, ladies and gentlemen. Today we start with the singing of our national anthem and I'm delighted to tell you today we have Melissa Megan. Melissa is an award-winning country soul artist whose songwriting skills have earned her national recognition in the Canadian Songwriting Competition. And in fact, Melissa's first single is being produced by a Grammy and Juno-nominated team, very appropriate for this year when in just a couple of brief months we'll be hosting the Junos as well. So as I ask you to stand and as we welcome Melissa, I'm going to ask you to join her in the singing of our national anthem. Melissa, please come forward to the floor and join us, please.
(singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north strong and free from far and wide. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.[227.12][227.12](applause)
Well, fellow councillors and ladies and gentlemen, I think the Junos are in great hands as a result of the kind of talent we've just seen and, Melissa, thank you for doing that and every congratulations. We have two presentations today that I'm delighted to share with you. The first presentation is a check to the United Way of Elgin Middlesex. And if I could ask Kelly Zigner, who is the CEO, Bobby Joe Gardner, Development Officer, both from the United Way Elgin Middlesex, please come forward to the floor as we present a check to you as well.[296.72][296.72](audience laughing) And family.[302.52][302.52](audience laughing) And city staff family. So just a couple of things, if I may. The City of London has had another incredible year in participating in the community fundraising campaign led by the United Way Elgin Middlesex. And I've mentioned Kelly Zigner, our, the CEO, and Bobby Joe Gardner, both of the Elgin, United Way Elgin Middlesex. And we've got a number of folks from the city here who have been integral to this campaign and I know it because they usually come in various clothing outfits and to our offices and, and challenge us to greatness in these various campaigns. So I do want to acknowledge the significant contribution of all city stakeholders, including our council, our staff, our bargaining agents and others who have made this year's campaign a success. But I also want to thank and congratulate all those in the involved in the city's United Way Campaign Committee who planned the events and encouraged direct contributions. Let me also acknowledge that the city was able to support a sponsored employee, Thomas Van der Hoof, who worked tirelessly on this campaign, both at the city and with other organizations across the community. So before I make that announcement, who from the city is going to come forward to introduce all of our folks from the city who are here today? Sandra, would you do that, please? And then we'll do the check together, okay? Please, would you introduce our city staff? Thank you.
Elizabeth Soros from our Housing Services, Social Services in Dearness Home area, Carolyn Adele, same area, Aiden Prince from HR, Cindy Foster, I didn't get that right, did I? Cindy Clark, I knew I would screw that up, Cindy Clark, and Ray Steinbach, both from Dearness. And we really want to acknowledge the people from Dearness that did some amazing work in terms of raising probably the most amount of money in one of the events at Dearness, so thank you very much.
And?
(inaudible).
Sorry, Sandra, and thank you very much. Now, by the way, one thing I'm going to say about Aiden Prince, you know what he, you know what his claim to fame is? Aiden Prince's claim to fame is actually his email address. So he, he self-proclaims it as "a prince" at london.ca and you certainly are one and I got to tell you, you were all tremendous and to our city staff, we're so proud of you. So, but based, can I tell you how they did all this? Based on participation of so many, led by these great folks, in terms of United Way breakfast, Jersey and pizza days, the barbecue and truck pull and many bake sale fundraisings at Dearness Home. So I am excited to be here and, and I'm going to kind of jump in the middle of here as, Sandra, could I ask you to flip this check over so everyone can see here? I'm so pleased that the 2018 City of London's United Way Campaign contribution from the City of London is $80,856.61, surpassing our 2017 campaign by $4,000. And at this point, if I can, I'm going to pass the microphone over to Kelly Zigner for her comments as well. Kelly Zigner from the United Way Elgin Middlesex, please.
So just a brief thank you on behalf of our community, really, for this important investment. Huge thank you to Sandra Deters-Bear, who is hiding in behind for her leadership toward this year's United Way campaign here at the city. And unlike many of the things you've been talking about lately, this isn't from your budget, this is from your employees. This is the employees who put their money where their mouth is because they truly believe in building a city where everyone matters. And that's our vision too. And we're so proud to partner with the City of London on this work. And these funds contributed by city staff will be invested in programs that build pathways out of poverty, give kids the tools they need to succeed and to strengthen communities. And a brief example of that is a young guy named Nate that worked on our campaign this year as a sponsored employee. Nate was somebody who just self-describes himself not as growing up in a low-income home, but growing up in a no-income home. So his mom and dad had significant disabilities, he had no working adults in his life, and when he turned 19, he found himself about to be a father with one high school credit. And that's where he found the support of the United Way-funded program that helped get him on a path to success, where he got his GED, he's now working full-time at McCormick's, is a homeowner and a taxpayer, and contributing back to our community. And so that's what programs like this help, help to do in our community. And it's, they're very important investments and only made possible by amazing volunteers. So thank you.
Bravo, thank you.[622.16][622.16](applause) Now, as has been our recent custom, because we've done it once in a row, now we'd like to make it twice, I would like to ask our council members, this is important because this is an absolutely city-driven initiative, and I'd like to ask councillors to come forward and join us in a picture as we, if we could as well, please. We think that's important. We might shift people over to the right a little bit there. But councillors, please come forward and share in the picture with our, with our great city hall staff and, and share in the great commitment that they've made in this process.[653.41][653.41](audience laughing) (inaudible) (audience 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 laughing) So it's not often we have two presentations, but this is for the London Food Bank, again, staff-generated in terms of support for the Business Cares Food Drive. So I'm going to actually ask Heidi if you could bring our representatives from the London Food Bank, the Business Cares Food Drive, and our city staff here, please, to come in so we can recognize them properly. This is the year of the big checks, you know, I got to tell you.[785.12][785.12](laughter) So ladies and gentlemen, this is a particularly important work for our community and something that I hold in very high personal regard. I've had some involvement with the Business Cares Food Drive over the years and in fact, 2018 now marks the 16th year that the City of London has participated in the Business Cares Food Drive. So we're going to make a check presentation in just a moment. But we have today some very special individuals. We have Glenn Pearson, who is the co-executive director of the London Food Bank and a dear friend, Wayne Dunn, who is the Chair of the Business Cares Food Drive and a very dear friend, Al Bruff from QB107, Jack Bird from the London Firefighters, Laurie Hamer from the Firefighters, our chief, and we have a number of corporate committee members who aren't all here but were integral to making this work and I must mention their names if you'd allow me, please. Zach Machado, Kendra Teeter, Shelby Nettleton, Sherry Kip, Heather Bunting, Rick Cosby, Kristy Ackers-Viller, TJ Hughes, Aiden Prince, Susan Bleszity, Lauren Pierce, Chantel De Silva, Jennifer Friesen, Kenny, Kelly Milburn. These are the individuals that truly led the city's initiative to an incredible number. And I, who's holding the check? All right, so we've got a check here and I'm going to ask Glenn Pearson and Wayne Dunn to come forward and not only to receive the check, but then I'm going to ask, if I may, Glenn and Wayne to make a couple of comments, please. The campaign raised a record $22,968.51 and 2,200 pounds for the London Food Bank. And I just have to say how proud you make us and to all of those committee members on behalf of the city, well done. And please come forward as we present the check. Please come forward, here we go.[908.01][908.01](applause) All set? So if I might, could I ask Glenn and then Wayne to say a few words, please?
Just Wayne.
If Glenn, if Glenn Pearson would please come forward, Wayne, you stay back. Ladies and gentlemen, Glenn Pearson.[937.32][937.32](laughter)
Every year it's the same, every year it's just remarkable what you have done for us. You know, it's been so many years, it's hard to know what to say, but we really want to thank Wayne Dunn, especially for organizing it all and for all that the city did. I didn't want to speak here today, so I'm done. Over to Wayne.
Thanks, Glenn, and thanks, Ed, your worship. It's first time. It's my pleasure really to thank everybody at the city. As Ed mentioned, it's the 16th year of the city of those, Business Cares just finished 19 years, so the, the amount of years the city's been involved, the amount of this check is, is huge for the campaign, the amount of food. And also forgotten sometimes, so Zach sits on our committee, incredible job, but the, as the campaign rolled out, the city helped us in various other ways too. We ran into some delivery problems and gave Jay Stanford a call. He provided a few vehicles to pick up, probably from 100 businesses from, for us. Zach had some people help us at the warehouse with forklifts and loading the food and everything. So your locals always involved and always thankful and I know your change drive and everything. And Aiden, you've been part of this for years, so on behalf of Business Cares, thank you for everything that you've done. The, the need continues to be there and it, we'll be back again another year as, for our 20th year. And never did Ed and I ever thank the amount of years that we really have to do this, but it's the demand of 3,500 families a month that translates into 9,000 individuals that people are helping. And the amount of food, the money that we raise through the Food Bank that Jane and Glenn are in charge of there also contributes to 25 other agencies in the City of London. And that's also a pretty big point that I think needs to be mentioned. So enough of what I've said, we've had an incredible committee, incredible help from the city and everybody that participates and I really do thank all of you. Thank you.
Bravo.[1070.33][1070.33](applause) So again, as we ask our, our council members to come forward, we're going to shift folks to the right. This is a worthy picture because this is, again, our staff and community in action. So if I can ask councillors to come forward, we're going to shift you down here, Aiden, please, closer to councillor Van der Hoof so we can get a picture on an angle here. And as everybody shifts down, Chief, we're going to push you to have, push people down. A couple of things we're going to mention. The way that this $22,968.51 and 2,200 pounds of food was developed was through a 50-50 draw, which was another sellout. By the way, you have to get really uncomfortably close if we're going to get you pushed down to this end here. Angle in, please, folks, there you go. So 50-50 draw, the return of the online auction, the change elves, and you had to see Aiden to know how interesting that was, raffle gift baskets, used book, used book sales, a skating event, and the holly jolly treat trolley delivering sweets and treats. But it's everybody's efforts that made this work and of course, the fire department consistently allowing fire stations across the city to be a depot for the, for the Food Bank drop-off through Business Cares. So we need to thank everybody for your heart and soul. Let's get into a picture and we'll do it together, all right? Here we go.[1153.15][1153.15](audience laughing) (audience 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 laughing) Well, thank you very much. And, and fellow councillors, I think it was important that we, that we make these kinds of statements and, and I think it's great that we, that we can acknowledge our staff in such a very special way. And in that respect, if you need copies of those photos, as we always make available, please just contact Heidi at the office and she'll be happy to make sure that we share those with you as well. So well done for the United Way, well done for the London Food Bank and the committees involved in that, that's tremendous. So I'll now turn us back to the agenda, please, the review of confidential matters to be considered in public. And just before we do, we have our statement regarding accessibility that we would like to read. Ladies and gentlemen, the City of London is committed to making every effort to provide alternate formats and communication supports for council, standing or advisory committee meetings and information upon request. To make a request for any city service, please contact accessibility@london.ca or 519-661-2489, extension 2425. Thank you for that. I'll ask if there are any disclosures of pecuniary, pecuniary interest, excuse me. Councillor Turner.
Thank you, your worship, with respect to number 8.5, which is the fourth report of SPPC. Disclosures with respect to Childreach, which my wife is an employee and receives funding through the community grants, Middlesex London Health Unit, component of the budget, which I am an employee and also receives funding through the City of London, and Mary Mount, the item there, all of these disclosures identified during the meeting at the SPPC as well.
Any other disclosures? Councillor Morgan.
Yes, I'll disclose an interest on bill number 59, as I own property in the area.
So noted, any other disclosures? Then seeing none, those have been noted. And I would like to acknowledge the review of confidential matters to be considered in public. I am not aware of any. Therefore now I will move council in closed session, ask for a motion to go to closed session. We have a number of reasons that are listed on the council agenda, moved by councillor Van der Hoof, seconded by councillor Hopkins. I'll turn your attention to the screen, please.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to zero.
Thank you very much. We will go to committee room three. For the benefit of, of our guests, we, in chambers, we will be approximately 30 minutes, could be two minutes less or three minutes more. Thank you. Let's go to committee room three, shall we, please? Let's go to committee room three, shall we, please?
So we are now back in session, having returned from our closed session, and I will turn your attention to the minutes. I'd look for a motion to approve the minutes of January 15, 2019. Is there a move? Or Counselor Pelosi, seconded by Counselor Van Meurbergen. Any discussion? Then I will turn your attention to the screen, please. We use your microphone, please, Counselor Van Holst.
I think this should have it now.
Closing the vote, the motion carries 15 to zero.
Thank you, and carrying on, communications and petitions. I'd ask you to note that no communications nor petitions were received, and there were no motions to which notices given. As a result, now I will ask for reports to be given. 8.1 of your agenda, the third report of the Planning and Environment Committee. Counselor Hopkins, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd like to put the third report of the Planning and Environment Committee on the floor. We had a shorter meeting than usual, only a couple hours, and I'd like to -- I have not heard from anyone asking me to pull anything from the report that you have in front of you. We had a -- two public participation meetings, one on the long-term care, and also a public participation meeting on a house of worship, which was interesting because I found that the -- I want to compliment staff and the applicant working on the house of worship, given that it was outside of the urban growth boundary, but the applicant and staff worked well together incorporating the house of worship on the site, as well as changing the uses of residential to agricultural land, as well as -- so that was a discussion that we had. We brought in -- we consented to receiving the birth-friendly development, getting staff's direction to circulate the attached bylaw, and also removing the priority levels on our heritage inventory register, too, removing the 1, 2, and 3, and just keeping it with one priority. So with that, we also received a delegation on 6188 Colonel Talbot Road that we are receiving, and also received a update from Counselor Lewis on the -- on the -- sorry, it just escapes me -- on the Arigal Community Improvement Plan, so, or Business Group. So with that, that is my report.
You would like to move the report, Counselor Hopkins?
Yes.
Would any councilors like to remove any clauses that are in Counselor Hopkins' report? Seeing none, I'll call the question and turn your attention to the screen, please. Thank you, Counselor Hopkins, and I'll now turn your attention. 8.2 in the agenda, the second report of the Community and Protective Services Committee. Counselor Cassidy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I have not heard from any of my colleagues. I'm not aware of any items that need to be pulled. I'll just note that item 3.1, the extension of hours for outdoor events during the Junos Week, that that was approved and recommended by committee to go forward with that. And with that, I'll put the entire report on the floor.
Thank you. Would anyone like to remove any of the items from the motion for discussion? Counselor Van Meurbergen.
Thank you, Mayor. If we could pull number seven.
So, Your Worship, that's item seven on the council agenda, 4.1 on the committee report.
So noted. Any other items to be pulled from the motion? We have a motion on the floor, moved by Counselor Cassidy. I'll turn your attention to the screen, please. Thank you. I'll now turn your attention to item seven, as Counselor Van Meurbergen has brought that forward. Do you wish to comment first? Counselor Cassidy?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. It was a councilor's submission from Counselor Lewis, and the committee is recommending that this be referred back to staff, as noted on the committee report.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor Van Meurbergen.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to commend the committee. I thought this was a very reasonable approach by sending this to referral. I mean, clearly, the industry is made up largely of very hard-working men and women running legitimate businesses, and they do have some grievances that need to be aired, and I think this is a good opportunity to engage in that type of consultation, and so I think all in all, this is win-win for all parties concerned.
So there was a motion to refer. I should have asked for a secondar for that. Well, then I won't. Any other comments or questions, please? We're still learning as we go. Any other comments or questions with respect to this? Then we'll call the question, please.
Closing the vote, the motion carries 15 to zero.
Thank you, Counselor Cassidy. Now, the second report of the Corporate Services Committee. Counselor Morgan.
It's the third report. We also did the fourth report, because we thought two meetings in one week would be better than one, but I'll start with the third report of the Corporate Services Committee. I'm happy to just move the report. It was simply us going into camera for the purpose of doing interviews related to Eldon's House Board of Directors, as is indicated in the closed session reason there, and we're progressing through those interviews.
Thank you. Again, this is now, my apologies, the third report of the Corporate Services Committee. You're making a motion to receive the report. Any secondar for that?
Don't need a secondar.
Don't need a secondar again. How lucky are we? Any other comments or questions? Then we'll call the question, please.
Closing the vote, the motion carries 14 to one.
Thank you. The fourth report of the Corporate Services Committee. Counselor Morgan, please.
Yes, the fourth report of the Corporate Services Committee. I have been asked to do number 10, which is consideration of appointments for the London Council for Adult Education separately. I'm not aware of anything else that anybody would like to do separately.
Any comments or questions with respect to this, with the exception of clause 5.2? Counselor Turner.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd read through with interest the report on number seven or 2.1, the assessment growth 2019 changes in taxable phase and values and shifts in taxation as a result of reassessment. I worked through it. It was, to be honest, a complex report in terms of identifying where everything went. I was wondering if perhaps I could get a bit of a summary of what happened there, and also with respect to recent events, actually, in the city of Calgary, where the taxation classifications between commercial buildings and residential put them in a bit of a tight spot as a result of a significant decrease in occupancy of commercial buildings due to some of the economic changes in Alberta, required a fairly significant shift of the assessment ratios over onto residential in order to be able to support not seeing massive increases in taxation in that one class. So I guess my question is twofold. Where did we land here as a result of that? And second is, do we see any -- anything in the future that we might have to safeguard against in a similar situation as it happened in Calgary, if there was a big shift in occupancy or, yeah, I guess basically occupancy or vacancy of certain classes of categories of taxable buildings? of certain classes of categories of taxable buildings?
Thank you, and through the chair, I'll make a few comments. I'll have our treasurer add anything that I might miss. So just a summary of what the report shows is, first off, it's a good news report from assessment growth in that it's one of the highest levels of assessment growth we've had since two thousand and nine. In the past, we have had decent assessment growth. In some years, it's been dragged down by conversions to condominiums, essentially moving out of one taxation class into another and lowering the assessment growth. I think the biggest jump that we saw was back in two thousand and seventeen. I think it was a point three difference on assessment growth, dragging it down. As you know, we've lowered kind of the spread between those tax classes, and ideally, that would decrease the number of conversions because the incentive wouldn't be as great. What you see attached to the report is a series of spreadsheets that show the weighted assessment growth and phased in values across, and Counselor Turner is right, this plus value changes through the impact process can create different burdens on the different tax classes when it comes to the average tax rate. So we pass, and is recommended to municipal council very soon, an average tax rate of two point seven percent. However, that tax rate will be spread, the burden of that tax rate will be spread differently across the different tax classes based on how fast they've appreciated in value relative to each other. So those that are appreciated faster will bear a larger burden. In the past, we have seen that, and what we have done is used our tax policy to consider any sort of mitigations to that or changes to the ratios. That is not part of this report, but a part of a report that comes forward in March? March? Yes, March. And that's where we would see the full impacts of both the impact assessments and consider any changes to our tax policy or changes to the ratios of those, those different classes that could mitigate some of the impacts that you would be concerned about if there were large impacts in every other areas. That's also where we've done things like harmonize and change the differences between tax classes, brought down the difference between the residential and multi-residential ratio. The last council did a lot of work on that. Out of a fairness argument, the Counselor Helmer actually did a lot of work on. So that is, will be a big discussion, and I would invite anybody who wants to come to the Corporate Services Committee in March when we discuss the tax policy. That's where all of these things will come to a head, and we can, we can decide whether any adjustments need to be made. I hope that answers the council's question. If there's more detail, I'd probably have to go to the treasurer.
No, thank you. That's very helpful through you, Worship.
Any other comments or questions for Counselor Morgan? Or staff? Seeing none, then I'll call the vote. I'll turn your attention to the screen, please.
Mr. Chair, well, just before the vote, I just wanted to highlight, both Counselor Hopkins and I produce reports with our work on both ABO and FCM Board of Directors on there. For committees' reference, we're going and working on behalf of municipalities in Ontario. There are lots of big issues, and those reports are worth taking a look at if you want to see what's happening externally.
So noted, and thank you both. Counselor Hopkins.
Thank you, Your Worship, if you allow me. Thank you for mentioning that to Counselor Morgan. I'm very pleased to represent the City of London on the ABO Large Urban Caucus. We did get an update on the requests from ABO to have the vacancy spots filled, and they have received forty-five applicants for a very small, limited amount of seats that are available. So I'll just leave that with the committee as an update.
Any other comments or questions? There was a motion on the table to receive. If there are no other questions, then I'll turn your attention to the screen as we call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries fifteen to zero.
Thank you, Counselor Morgan.
Item number ten is consideration for appointment to the London Council for Adult Education, and the reason committee was doing interviews is because council directed it to do so. They directed us to do a few interviews. We completed all of those interviews on that day. We emerged to engage in discussion on the candidates, and through that discussion, it was determined that we would have a ranked ballot to show colleagues what their preferences are. Based on the interviews and the ranked ballots, the recommendation before you is to appoint Dee Vandenboemen to that particular board. I was asked to pull this separately, as some colleagues would like to discuss it.
Are there any comments or questions for Counselor Morgan or to discuss this issue? Counselor Squire.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've spoken on this a number of times in the past, and I obviously disagreed with the process we undertook, but that's not why I'm standing today. What I'm standing today to say is I would just like the opportunity to vote. This matter was referred, was originally between, before this group as a whole, and we had a vote. It's now back here. I, quite frankly, would like to have the opportunity and not be deprived of my opportunity to vote for this position. So I would like us to defeat the recommendation and have the committee as a whole vote on who they want to take this position and then live with the result. But it's very difficult for me to have voted on a position, then have it referred to a committee, have that committee's vote then decide the position without me having an opportunity to vote. After the vote, you won't hear, you certainly won't hear, I think, the kind of complaints that another, a committee just made a decision on what council as a whole should have decided. So that's all I'm asking for. Nothing further.
Counselor Morgan?
My only comment on that is, the only reason we produced a recommendation is because council asked us to do so. So we've returned that back. The council is right. If the committee recommendation would be defeated, then that would be the council's prerogative to do so.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, Your Worship. And through you, I just want to briefly say that I concur with Counselor Squire. All of our other appointments were made by a committee of the whole, and this appointment now is being made by the individuals of the committee. Not that I don't respect the work that they do, but I think the appointment process should be consistent throughout.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Turner.
Thank you, Your Worship. This was referred back. I guess it seemed that there were some irregularities or questions at the time, and so it was put back to the committee, where normally those interviews would happen as a result of any of the advisory committees, boards, and commissions where an interview is requested. An interview is done with respect to the candidates to hear more fulsomely the qualifications and aptitude for the position of those, to fill those vacancies. The committee did that, and we work as committees in order to be able to kind of parse out the work of council so that we can hear, you know, we've got a planning and environment committee, which works and delves in with some specialty on planning and environment work. We have a community and protective services committee with specialty and focus on that area, and corporate services also does much the same. So we've asked them to take a look from a process where they have the opportunity to hear more fulsomely from the applicants, and they have done so and have returned a recommendation to this council, which is not unlike the process of any other committee in the way that we go about work. So I think it's quite appropriate. As a council, we went back and said, okay, corporate services, take this one and give us a recommendation. Certainly, we are free to digress from the opinion and recommendation of the committee, which is the prerogative of every councillor, but I think in this circumstance, it sounds like the process was appropriate, and I just wanted to make note of that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, then we will call the question. All those, I'll turn your attention to the screen, please.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, Counselor Squire. Closing the vote and the motion carries ten to five.
Thanks. Thank you, Counselor Morgan. Since you're still standing, if I could ask you, please, we have an added report, the fifth report of the Strategic Priorities and Planning Committee from last night. Thank you. I was away, as you know, at the Big City Mayor's Conference, so I'd like to call on, excuse me, Counselor Helmer, if I could to, let me move it. I apologize, I have to move this back once, folks. I'd call it jet lag, but I must admit I took the train. The fourth report of the SPPC. Counselor Morgan, you're still standing.
Yes, and I'd be delighted to deliver the report hat-trick tonight and do the third one. This is for colleagues' reference, is going back to our public participation meeting on the budget on January seventeenth. Basically, it was a meeting where we received the delegations from the public. There was one piece of direction coming out of that from, actually, Counselor Squire, and that, so I think we could just put the whole, the whole report on for tonight.
You're moving is?
Oh, five point one, there was a conflict, so I guess I'm going to have to do that. Sorry, number three, five point one, the Marymount Children's Funding Request. We were asked to do that separately, so.
And any other reports to be pulled? Does that cover your issue, Counselor Hopkins? Seeing none? With one item pulled, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries fifteen to zero.
Counselor Morgan?
Yes, so item three or five point one in the report was the direction moved by Counselor Squire, seconded by Counselor Ploza, to take some actions on the Marymount presentation. Given some discussions I had through my engagement on this, it may be appropriate for council to amend part A, which was referring the two thousand and nineteen funding request to, oh, sorry, the, I want to refer the request that goes to, part C, the Marymount Funding Support Centre in two thousand and twenty request for funding the amount of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars to the twenty twenty-three, twenty, twenty twenty, twenty-three multi-year budget process for consideration. In my discussion with the executive director, their appropriate path would likely be to apply to the community granting program. It actually comes sooner. It certainly wouldn't preclude them from engaging in the budget process in the future, but I don't think we want to refer this. We probably just want to provide the information back to Marymount that they could engage in the community granting process for that portion of their ask or all of their ask, frankly, if that's the way they want to go. So I would suggest that we make that amendment or vote it down and then make that amendment. Okay. Then maybe I shouldn't move this. I think we should defeat this so that we can do what was suggested based on my discussions with the executive director. So we'll call C separately then. So I'll put five point one, A, B, and A and B on, but not C.
Any discussion on those items with the exception of C? Then we'll call the question. May I turn your attention to the screen, please?
Closing the vote and the motion carries eleven to three with one recused.
Counselor Morgan?
Yes. Okay, there we go. Yes, so five point one, C, as I explained, this is the referral to the multi-year budget process. Given our discussions, it's highly likely that they're going to potentially engage in the community granting process, which starts in the spring. That comes way earlier. I would suggest that we defeat C, and then we can replace it with a clause that would essentially say advise them of the community granting process and the timelines of that so that they could put their funding request forward.
Yes, Your Worship. I just do have a quick question through you to staff. Do we, as a council, need to make that motion? Can they not proceed through the granting process on their own?
Staff? Would that be Ms. Barbon? Oh, sorry, Ms. Livingston, please.
Through the chair, certainly anyone can apply to the granting process. I do think the motion helps in clarity, though, in terms of which process they might be following.
So it sounds like not necessary, but it may add some clarity and direction. Is that what we're saying, staff? Any other comments or questions for Counselor Morgan or staff? Counselor Squire?
The one thing I've, through you, Mr. Chair, that I've learned through this entire process is that the community really seems to value the integrity of the community grants programme. They understand it. They understand that it's something they can apply for. They understand that who are the decision-makers, that it's not a political decision, that it's made on an impartial basis. They understand they've got to come prepared to make a good presentation. And I know that we did this so we wouldn't have the political process of people coming to us and saying what, they're in need and they want us to give money. So I think if anything, what I've learned through this is that the community really values this process. They understand it, and I guess if, some people may not be aware of it, that surprises me because it's seen, every time I meet with someone, they talk about the community grants process. So I want to thank Ms. Livingston for that, and I think if, again, if we've learned anything, it's that the integrity of the things we create when we put thought into it should be maintained.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Then just for clarity of the vote, because there was a, not sure there was a double negative, but I want to make sure that we know exactly what we're voting for. Could I ask the clerk, please, if we vote yes, what does that mean? If we vote no, what does that mean, just for the purpose of clarity, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion that is on the floor is part C of the original recommendation, which is that the Marymount Family Support and Crisis Centre twenty twenty request for funding in the amount of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and four dollars be referred to the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three multi-year budget process for consideration. If you vote yes, then it will be referred to that process. If you vote no, and it loses, then that, that part of the motion is defeated and gone.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for the councillor or staff or anyone else? Counselor Cassidy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just, I'm just speaking in support of the direction that Counselor Morgan is recommending. He is the councillor that was, would have been given direction, but he went ahead and spoke with them, knowing that the direction was going to come after the opportunity to speak with the people at Marymount. So I'm hoping that council will support the direction that Counselor Morgan is recommending since he is the one that was, was tasked with going to speak with the people at Marymount, and I believe this is a good recommendation. I believe that we should, as Counselor Squire said, respect the integrity of the process that we set up and keep this as apolitical as possible. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll turn your attention to the screen as we call the question.
And the motion fails, three to eleven with one recused.
Thank you. Anything else, Counselor Morgan?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to propose a motion, even though I'm not convinced myself it's necessary, because Ms. Livingston said it might provide some clarity, that given that Marymount did present to the public participation meeting in the budget process, that we add a clause that advise, that directs our staff to advise them of the community granting process as the recommended option for their funding request, which, as you know, was recommended by our treasurer at our most recent SPPC meeting, so that they are formally aware that that is the appropriate funding source as identified by municipal council. So it's just advising them of the community granting process and the timelines related to that.
I do need a second on that one, though. Please, Counselor Hillier, any comments or questions? Counselor Squire?
Marymount is in Ward Six, and it's one of the most important services we have in the city of London. They provide services at the ground level to people in need. When there's a child at night, when their parents aren't around and they need a place, police need a place to take a baby or a very young child, that's where, that's where they do it. And I, I value that, those services. And this may not have And this may not have reached the conclusion that Marymount wanted, but I can tell you that when councillor Morgan and I spoke to the executive director of Marymount, there was a high level of professionalism and understanding of the process we, we've had to go through, and I really respected them for that. So I expect that we will be providing, and those of us who live in Ward Six will continue to provide as much help as we can to Marymount, and, and a lot of, a lot provide volunteer services, make donations, and I'd encourage anybody in the community to do that, because this, this institution started as an orphanage that was located at St. Joseph's Hospital, and it was run by the Sisters of St. Joseph's. And so they would, it may seem like an antiquity, but that's where children with no parents and no families would go. So think about where they are today and how far they've advanced. So I can't say enough about Marymount, and I can't say enough about how they've, they, they and their supporters have handled this entire process.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? There's a sec, yeah, there was a sec.
Hillier.
Hillier. Councilor Hillier. Yes, thank you. Councilor Morgan?
Yeah, I just want to wrap up to let council know that this action will come as no surprise to the executive director of, of Marymount. I discussed it as a potential possibility, given the proceedings of the, the budget, and that this motion, which kind of came from the public participation meeting, even though the budget is landing on February 12th, would have to be dealt with tonight on this day, and that this was my suggestion on how to deal with it. So it won't come as a surprise to him, and I don't think there will, there'll be any concern with what we're suggesting here today.
That was a wrap-up, so I will turn your attention to the screen as we call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, twelve to two, with one recused.
Thank you, Councilor Morgan. Councilor Homer, I know you've been waiting, because I called on you earlier, now we're going to give you this chance. Thank you, by the way, for chairing the SBPC meeting last night in my absence, but I'd like to call on you, please, to present the report.
Thank you. I'll put item nine point two, the Sixth Report of Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee, on the floor, whole thing.
Are there, is there anyone who wishes to take anything off the report for discussion? Councilor Turner?
Your Worship, just maybe with respect to number three or five point one comment, and then from there, we can figure out where to go with it.
I'm sorry, did you have any comment at this point? Please.
If, I was thinking in contemplation of what we discussed yesterday, in the, in the outcomes in leading in public service and the, the metrics that were put forward to us from staff, outcome number two is Londoners experience exceptional and valued customer service. Expected results E is increase the use of technology to improve service delivery. LPS seventeen is in that strategy, is continue, maintain, build, and enhance a high-performing and secure computing environment. In the metrics, it has four, and the fourth one is number of targeted Wi-Fi implementations completed. I think this is consistent with the direction that, that was brought forward in the clause in the Sixth Report of the SBPC in three point one, or in five point one. So one of the reasons I voted against it was really, it was too specific at this level in the, in the strategic plan to, to put forward in there, and I think it's, it's reflected already in the, in the STRAP plan. So I'd imagine that the councillor moving it wants it to go forward as it was, but I moved that forward as a recommendation to say that it's already there and encompassed.
Thank you. I think we do need to pull fifty-nine out of. Sorry, let me withdraw that. Any other comments with respect to the report as presented by Councilor Homer?
I think it's probably easiest if we just withdraw five point one, sounds like the councillor wants to vote against it, but do all the rest.
So noted. Any other comments or questions? Then I'll turn your attention to the screen as we call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, fifteen to zero.
Councilor Homer?
I'll put five one on the floor. As colleagues recall, we discussed this one around this time yesterday.
Any comments or questions? Councilor Lewis?
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you to colleagues. I think it's respectfully, Councilor Turner and I had an opportunity to discuss this. I understand where he's coming from on this. Certainly, I agree that it's important that we find the proper pockets of funding and the proper categories to put things in. I'd encourage colleagues to leave this as is. While I understand that LPS zero one seven might be an appropriate spot, I'm concerned that that particular clause of the STRAP plan may be perceived as referring to Wi-Fi implementations from the corporate level, rather than public access. As I mentioned yesterday, I think that this might also fit in the SOC portion of the strategic plan, strengthening our communities, but the reason to leave it open is so that our staff, Ms. Livingston and her team, can find where this fits appropriately in the strategic plan and move forward from there.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councilor Van Holst?
Thank you. I'm fine with this staying as well in the strategic plan. We'll have to realize that the wording of these things and how specific they are will maybe make the difference between what we will do and what we could do. And so if we want to make sure something happens, then we should have it be worded specifically enough.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, then I'll turn your attention to the screen as we call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, thirteen to two.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilor Homer. For the Fourth Report of Council in closed session, may I call on Councilor Turner, please, to present the report?
Thank you, Your Worship. I present to you the Fourth Report of Council in closed session. Your Council in closed session reports. Number one, offer to purchase industrial lands, one nine six zero nine four six, Ontario Inc., parts three and four, plan three three R dash one six three six eight, Cutty Industrial Lands. That, as a procedural matter pursuant to section two three nine, bracket six, of the Municipal Act 2001, the following recommendations be forwarded to council in closed session for the purpose of considering whether the recommendation should be forwarded to council for deliberation and a vote in public session. That, on the recommendation of the Managing Director of Corporate Services and City Treasurer, Chief Financial Officer, on the advice of Manager Realty Services, with respect to the city-owned industrial land located on the north side of Page Street, being the part of Cutty Industrial Lands, containing an area of approximately 2.84 acres, being composed of parts three and four, plan three three R dash one six three eight, correction, one six three six eight, outlined in the sketch heretofore as Schedule A, the following action be taken. A, the offer submitted to Copia Developments under corporate name one nine six zero nine four six, Ontario Inc., the purchaser, to purchase the property from, subject property from the city at a purchase price of $227,200, reflecting a sale price of $80,000 per acre, heretofore as Schedule B, be accepted and subject to the following conditions. I, the purchaser be allowed until thirty days after waiver conditions to examine title at purchaser's own expense. II, the purchaser with sixty day, within sixty days from acceptance of the offer to carry out soil tests, as might reasonably require. III, the purchaser within sixty days conduct environmental inspections and investigations of the property satisfactory to the purchaser. IV, the purchaser within sixty days determine the financial feasibility of purchasers, purchasers' intended use of the property satisfactory to the purchaser. V, the purchaser acknowledges and accepts the property in an as-is condition and VI, the proposed commencement date of construction within one year from the date of deed in place of the required one year from date of deed. Number two, property acquisition, one eight zero Wellington Road, Bus Rapid Transit Project. That is a procedural motion, subject to section two three nine, bracket six, of the Municipal Act 2001, the following recommendation be forwarded to council in closed session for the purpose of considering whether recommendation should be forwarded to council for deliberation and a vote in public session. That the following actions be taken with respect to the property located at one eight zero Wellington Road, further described in part lots one eight, two six, and two seven of plan four six seven, bracket fourth, part two, plan three three R, three seven four four, further described as pin zero eight three five eight zero zero eight five, containing an area of approximately 3078 square feet, as shown on the location map for the purposes of future infrastructure improvements. A, the offer submitted by Shane Sterling Johnson to sell the property to the city for the sum of $215,000 be accepted, subject to the following conditions. I, the city having the right to view the property one further time prior to closing. II, the transaction includes all the existing appliances. III, the city will assume the rental contract for the hot water tank. And B, the financing for this acquisition be approved to set out in Source of Financing Report, heretofore as Appendix A. Three, property acquisition, two six three Wellington Road, Bus Rapid Transit Project. That, as a procedural matter pursuant to section two three nine, bracket six, of the Municipal Act 2001, the following recommendation be forwarded to council in closed session for the purpose of considering whether the recommendation should be forwarded to council for deliberation and a vote in public session. That the further actions be taken with respect to the property located at two six three Wellington Road, further described as part lots six five and six six, plan four five two, fourth, bracket, pin zero eight three six four zero zero nine or three, containing an area of approximately 4575 square feet, shown on the location map for the purpose of future infrastructure improvements. A, the offer submitted by Sarah Van Devoorn to sell the subject property to the city for the sum of $275,000 be accepted, subject to the following conditions. I, the city agreeing to pay the vendors except reasonable legal costs, including fees, disbursements, and applicable taxes, to complete this transaction, subject to assessment. II, the city having the right to view the property one further time prior to closing. III, the city will resume the rental contract for the water, hot water tank. IV, the city will assume existing tenancies. V, the city agreeing to pay further sum of $5,000 for the appliances and shuttles. And B, the financing for this acquisition be approved and set out in the Source of Financing Report, heretofore as Appendix A.
Thank you, Sir Seconder. Councilor Cassidy? Does any councillor wish to take any of these items off the whole motion for discussion? Councilor Squire? So we're talking about the Wellington Street acquisitions. All right. Anything else? So what we're voting on are the, are the first points excluding the two Wellington Street properties? Any discussion with respect to the first items? Seeing none, I'll turn your attention to the screen as we call the vote.
Councilor Van Holst? Closing the vote and the motion carries, fifteen to zero.
Thank you. Now we have the items, and if I understood them, if council is comfortable, we'll, maybe we deal with them simultaneously or together as one issue, unless I am directed that we vote on them separately, or deal with them separately, at least seeing none, then any comments or questions with respect to the remaining clauses of this motion? Seeing none, then I'll call the question. Your attention to the screen, please.
Councilor Salie? Closing the vote and the motion carries, eleven to four.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor Turner. Item ten in the agenda, there are no deferred matters, inquiries. Do councillors have any specific inquiries to staff? Seeing none? I've not been made of any, aware, I've not been made aware of any emergent motions. We have the bylaws now to vote on, please, and we will first vote on bills fifty-one through sixty-seven, excluding bill fifty-nine, and adding bills sixty-eight, sixty-nine, and seventy. First reading, I will ask for a mover, and a secondary, is there a mover? Councilor Homer, is there a secondary? Councilor Hopkins? I will call the vote.
Councilor Squire? Closing the vote and the motion carries, fifteen to zero.
Thank you. Now I will look for a second, a mover and a secondary for a second reading, of bills numbers fifty-one through sixty-seven inclusive, with the exception of bill fifty-nine, and added bills number sixty-eight, sixty-nine, and seventy. Is there a mover? Thank you, Councilor Van Holst. Is there a secondary? Councilor Cassidy? Any discussion for a second reading? Seeing none, I'll turn your attention to the screen as we call the question. We just have a couple of procedural questions here, folks, just bear with us a moment. We just have a couple of procedural questions here, folks, just bear with us a moment.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 13 to 2.
Thank you. Now I'll turn your attention to third reading. Counselor Van Mirbergen.
Mayor, thank you. It's, it's, wasn't entirely clear to some of us what the number of the bylaw bill was for the Wellington Street properties, Wellington Road properties, rather. So now we know the BRT properties are 69 and 70, and we're in the middle of voting. Now, we just did the second reading. I'd like to ask for reconsideration of the first reading.
Are you making, are you making that as a motion? I think that we'll need to do that to get support from counsel.
I'll leave the hands to clerk. Do we need a motion?
So clerk, I'll ask for clarification. If not, I'll make a ruling on that.
Mr. Merron, in accordance with the council procedure by law, a member of council can bring forward a reconsideration as part of the meeting. It would require two-thirds, or a vote of 10, in order for that reconsideration to come forward, noting as well that the motion on the second reading has also been done as well, so I'm not sure whether you wish that to be reconsidered as well.
Speak through the microphone if you're going to speak, please.
Okay. Yes, if we're going to do the reconsideration, then we'll do first and second reading.
So you're, that would be, that would be your motion to do that. Is there a second or for that? And then I'll just explain what we're going to do with Counselor Lehman. So what this means is that if we vote for reconsideration of first reading and second reading, then that means that bills number 69 and 70 would be treated differently. To have that reconsideration, we require 10 counselors, 10 votes around the table to allow for reconsideration. I'm not aware that there is a discussion on this, but I could be wrong, since this really isn't the, the first reading again, this is all about a reconsideration. But clerk, I'll be, I'll be moved by your comments here, whether that, whether this is debatable?
Through you, Your Worship, in accordance with council procedure by law, there is no debate of the actual reconsideration. There can be debate at second reading, just the, the counselor that's bringing forward the motion for consideration can state why it's being brought forward, which I believe the counselor has done. So then you would open it for a vote, and if it passes, then you would move forward. If it doesn't, then you just would move forward with third reading of the bills.
So what we're saying then, that if this motion does not pass, with 10 votes around the table, allowing counselors to reconsider their, their vote on first reading and, and second reading, because we'll be doing them simultaneously, then this now goes without, this goes now without debate. Counselor Helmer, please.
Thank you. I understand the pickle that the counselors are in, since they voted in the affirmative. For the first one, they can certainly move reconsideration, but for the second one, unfortunately, they can't, so I'll move reconsideration.
Please go through the chair, folks, if you don't mind.
Regardless, I'm moving reconsideration so that we can deal with it.
Second of a Counselor Van Holst. Thank you. Any other comments or questions with respect to reconsideration? We have, we have a mover, we have a second or for this. I'll turn your attention. So is it clear what, what we're all voting on now? Anybody have any questions about this? All right, then I'll turn your attention to the screen, please.
Counselor Squire, did you want to, I have it, you not voting, so, oh, there it goes. And just to clarify, before I close the vote, this is reconsideration of all the bylaws that were put forward, not just 69 and 70, so we're starting from scratch and then going forward, okay? So I'm closing the vote and the motion carries, 15 to 0.
Thank you. I'll turn your attention back now again to the bylaws. So we are going to be voting on bills 51 through 67, excluding bill 59, and we're adding bill number 68. Is there a mover? Counselor Helmer, is there a second or? Counselor Hillier. I'll turn your attention to the screen, please.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 15 to 0.
Thank you. We now have second reading. I'll ask for a mover and a second or for the second reading of bills 51 through 67, excluding bill 59 and bill 68. Is there a movender, mover, Counselor Helmer, seconded by Counselor Van Holst? Any comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll turn your attention to the screen.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 15 to 0.
Thank you. Now we have third reading of bills numbers 51 through 67, excluding bill 59 and added bill number 68. As we vote, I'll turn your attention to the screen, please. And before we do that, in the spirit of democracy, I'd like to have a mover and a second or, please. Moved by Counselor Turner, second by Counselor Van Mirbergen, thank you. And now your attention to the screen.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 15 to 0.
Now I'm going to turn your attention to bill 59, first reading. I'll require a mover and a second or, please. Moved by Counselor Lewis, seconded by Counselor Helmer. I turn your attention to the screen as we call the vote.
Counselor Cassidy. Closing the vote and the motion carries, 14 with one recused.
Thank you. Now we, I'm looking for a mover and a second or for second reading of bill 59. Counselor Pelosi, seconded by Counselor Lehman. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll turn your attention to the screen as we call the vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 14 with one recused.
So now I'll look for a mover and a second or for third reading of bill number 59. I'll call the question. Counselor Lewis, seconded by Counselor Cassidy.
Counselor Van Holst. Counselor Hopkins. Counselor Van Mirbergen. Closing the vote and the motion carries, 14 with one recused.
Thank you. That completes all three readings. I would like to suggest we combine bills 69 and 70. I think there's sufficient similarity, unless it's the wish of any counselor to have those voted on separately. Seeing none, then I will ask for a mover and a second or for the introduction of first reading of bills number 69 and 70. Counselor Cassidy, seconded by Counselor Pelosi. I'll turn your attention to the screen as we call the vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 11 to 4.
Thank you. Second reading, I'll look for a mover and a second or for second reading of bills numbers 69 and 70. Counselor Hopkins, seconded by Counselor Kayavaga. Any comments or questions? Counselor Morgan.
Yes, I have a question through the chair for our staff. This is an acquisition for the Bus Rapid Transit Project. I'm curious on what happens and what do we do with properties that we're acquiring for Bus Rapid Transit? And if we end up not proceeding with that, what would we do with the properties after the, after the fact?
That's a question for staff. Ms. Birburn.
Through the chair, I'll start, and if there's anything related specifically to Bus Rapid Transit, I'll pass it over to Ms. Shear. But essentially, the, those will be owned by the City of London, so in the meantime, we are holding those properties, we are using them for housing and renting them out, and they're continuing to be active properties until such time that we require them. If it is determined that we don't need them in the future, we can either put them back on the market to sell them at the market at that time, or a portion of the property thereof if we only require a portion.
Ms. Shear, did you want to add to that? Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Van Holst.
Thank you. And this question through you to our staff. I understand that the people who sold the properties have the first right refusal to purchase it back. Is that correct?
Ms. Birburn.
Your worship, that's only true when properties are expropriated, when they're purchased between a willing buyer and a willing seller. That is not the case.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, then I'll turn your attention to the screen as we call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 12 to 3.
Thank you. Now we'll go to third reading of bill 6930. I'll look for a mover and a second or, please. Counselor Pelosi, seconded by Counselor Hopkins. I'll turn your attention to the screen as we call the vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 12 to 3.
Thank you, counselors. Now it's that very special time of evening where I look for a mover and a second or to adjourn. Counselor Sally, seconded by Counselor Hillier.
Counselor Van Holst. Closing the vote and the motion carries, 15 to 0.
Meeting adjourned.